You sure? I thought there was one there. I guess I didn't.
It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this Menneson City Council meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner?
Here.
Councilman Nestor? Councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Here.
Mayor Mosher?
Present.
Mayor, no four members present, one absent, but no decorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Coaster to come give, lead us in prayer.
Amen. Let's pray. Lord, tonight, we're thankful. First thing I want to do is give thanks for the many wonderful things you've done in all of our lives, in this city, for over the years. Anything good comes from you. And so, I just ask you to help us to keep that moving forward. We want to cooperate with you because all good comes from you. And so, help us to do the things that we are to do. And we're asking you tonight, the things that you do. Let there be, you came to turn the hearts of the children to the parents and the parents to the children. Let that happen in a wonderful way here in this city like never before. Let there be harmony and beauty take place between people, neighbor to neighbor, father to son, daughter to mother. And help us in the things that we are to do also. You told us that if two of us agree on earth concerning anything, you do what we ask. And so, help us to be skillful in that. I pray that you'd plant special wisdom in the hearts of the citizens tonight here and that we'd be able to share these things and come to conclusions so that no one person would have to do all the work, but that we would collaborate and learn the beauty of two are better than one, three are a chord that's not easily broken. So, these things we just ask. Your blessing and your guidance tonight, Lord. We're so thankful for all that you do for us. And we're asking this because of your amazing, eternal, unchanging love for the people here and for this city. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time, make sure that everybody's had a chance to review the minutes from the previous session and ask for somebody to make a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the September 12, 2024 meeting of the Menneson City Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegrapis. I have three questions here on page four on P. Motion to approve fire escrow account for sixty-four over Hill Drive, nine thousand dollars. What is that, a liability or what?
That's money that's put into escrow when a place burns until there's restitution made. And this is what we're doing.
Okay, which place? Just for that location?
Just for that location.
Okay, so each location that burns down, you're going to have an escrow account for them?
The insurance is paid to escrow to make sure that the property is cleaned up.
You do this with all the properties?
All the properties that burn, yes.
Okay, going back to page two. How did the NEOMI group got involved with the Civic Center?
Well, that'll be explained when we get to that point. But it basically boils down to that they're applying for a grant through SBHS and they need a facility to do it in. That's what that's all about.
Okay, I got two questions on that. One, did they get the grant yet? Just because they applied, that doesn't mean that they're eligible.
No. And when they get the grant, if they need to use Civic Center, we'd like to make it known.
And second question to follow up. Do they have their five oh one C three?
I believe it's in the works, yes.
Well, it's in the works. You said this from last year, it's in the works. So, how could these people who aren't a legal entity?
They are a legal entity.
As a group, they have no five oh one C three?
But they're a legal entity.
They are a legal entity.
Yeah, separately. So, if I collect everybody around our time and form a new group, that doesn't make that group a new legal entity?
No, but they have filed for legal identification.
Well, they filed and they've been filing since last year.
Okay.
One more. This. Okay, this Third Street Block Party. What's that all about?
That's an annual block party that his place puts on every year.
Okay, and how's the city getting involved?
That was approved last session. We're not even approving it this session.
Okay, I'm not talking about when it was approved. I said, why is the city getting involved?
Because it's a community event and that's what the city is, a big community.
How's it a community event? It's a store owner.
It is a community event. All the businesses in the area are invited to participate. All the people in the area are invited to participate.
Are you going to provide the same accommodations for all business owners that want to do a block party?
If they have the same mission, I would do so.
Okay, what's the same mission? Tell me what's the mission?
Somebody that makes it a community event.
So, you're telling me that any store owner could have a block party?
If they put together the same kind of effort that these people did, yes.
All right, well, you're on record here saying that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Honor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Ron Cromelak and I'm here to replace the comedy act that was just in front of me. I'd like to give you a report on the Sherman Tank Restoration Project. The World War II restoration, the tank restoration has been completed and this project has been undertaken by the American Legion and Veterans of Foreign Wars of Menneson with the cooperation of many area and local businesses, organizations, and individuals. The results in the savings to the city of Menneson in the amount of nearly eighteen thousand dollars to this point. And I am asking permission to purchase, install, and maintain at no cost to the city of Menneson a solar street light to be located at that plaza where the tank is located to illuminate the plaza area containing the tank during dark hours of the day for safety and security reasons. This will result in an additional savings to the city of more than ten thousand dollars. George Schuster has donated a motion sensing trail camera to be mounted in a tree for security purposes. He stated that he will be responsible for maintaining the camera and replacing the batteries as needed. Any and all monies left over from this project will automatically go into the Menneson War Veterans Memorial Trust for future maintenance of these currently approved war memorials located in the city of Menneson. And anyone wishing to donate to the War Veterans Memorial Trust can make out a check to the Menneson War Veterans Memorial Trust and mail it to the American Legion Post twenty-eight, P.O., Box one forty-five, Menneson, PA. The War Memorial Trust was established in May nineteen on 2011 by the Thomas McKee American Legion Post twenty-eight and the Allison Liscanic Veterans of Foreign Wars Post eleven ninety under the direction of then-President Judge Gilfrid Maholick. One of the objectives of the Menneson War Veterans Memorial Trust is to perpetuate the names and memories of the Menneson War veterans indelibly in the history of the United States of America. Menneson veterans are concerned that the memorials may be neglected, thus desecrated, the memories of the war veterans, especially those who made the supreme sacrifice, and to have the ability to preserve and maintain such war memorials when the veterans' community is no longer able to provide the care needed for the war memorials. The trust is an independent, irrevocable, not-for-profit trust and is created for the sole purpose of future maintenance and preservation of Menneson War veterans' memorials. Ron Cromelak is the chairman. Richard Fankowitz is the vice chairman. The trustees of the war memorial are James Billick, Matt Rome, Jack Howe, Delmar Hepple, and Lindsey Vlasic. And that completes my report to the city on the war memorial. One other thing of note I would like to mention is there is no longer a street sign located at the intersection of Tyrell Boulevard and State Road or State Street, whatever the proper name is. I would like to see the city replace the sign that used to be there. Thank you.
Okay, let me ask you a real quick question first off, before you leave. A couple of questions. First off, where are you going to mount this light? What are you going to mount it on?
It's going to be mounted as a street light.
So, it'll be on a pole?
It will be, it will be on a pole. It would be, it'll have a cement base like a normal street light would have and then it will have a pole. At the top, it will have a solar panel.
Okay.
And it will have a battery pack and it will have a small little computerized thing that turns the lights on, on and off. The light will be brighter during the early part of the dark hours and then it'll dim thirty percent to forty percent in the, over the night hours. So, it'll still be lit, but not quite as bright.
Okay.
My understanding is the battery pack on that will last anywhere from one to two years. And of course, the American Legion and VFW will do the maintenance on it to replace the battery pack when it's needed. And of course, when we are gone, that's why the trust is there to take care of doing that, that type of maintenance.
Well, first off, I think that would be quite a, quite a thing was you driving by. I would like to point out, though, that the park is closed from sundown to sunup.
But people do walk their dogs there.
That's not proper, though, to be honest with you. And I don't want to encourage that because there are dark spots up there.
Okay.
Just public safety. But I do think that would be spectacular to be driving down the road, look over there and see the tank lit up. I think that would be worth it in itself, to be honest.
Okay. What I would request is written permission from the city to do that so that when we contract to do it, I have something I can show the contractor that it is valid and legal to do.
Okay, well, I think that as it is, you made the presentation. Council will, at the next council meeting, have a motion to make all that happen.
Okay.
And as far as a street sign is concerned, I will reach out to our Public Works and see if we can get a street sign put back there for State Road and Tyrell.
Okay.
It's kind of an interesting intersection. It's on a crest of a hill. You can't make a left turn. And if you're coming up from the other side, you've got to know where you're going if you're, or you're going to miss it.
Right. And that's, that's a whole problem there. People come up and don't know you have to turn around and come back.
Yeah.
If you're coming from.
It's a mess.
The direction of the dump.
Right, it's a mess.
And if you're coming up the other way, there is no sign to tell you where you're at.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Question on that NEOMI thing. If they're not a five oh one C three, they can't apply for a grant through the city?
They're applying for an SBHS grant. It's not a city grant.
I thought they.
They will be fine to do it, yeah. But it's not a city-related grant. It's an SBHS grant.
Had it been a city, they could not apply because they're not five oh one C three. Even though they're applying, they still can't go after it. But as you said.
I'm not certain, Joe. Is that a requirement to apply for a grant?
That's going to depend on.
Yeah, I think everyone, Ted, would be.
They're not applying through the city for the grant.
Yeah, I see.
That's what you said. I thought you said something.
I mean, so whatever grant they're getting, it depends on whatever the grant is.
And there's plenty of churches that work too.
Different requirements for different things. Okay, thank you. On page three, there were two properties out of the repository that were sold. First guy's, his name is I. His name is Matthews and I'm not even going to pronounce. I could, but I'm not going to worry about it. And the second one is Quayme Malcolm. Are these Menneson residents that are purchasing these repository properties?
No.
Why would we want to sell to someone that we're not familiar with?
I invited them both to come here.
And where are they from? What, no?
I think one of them, one of them may be here, as I understand it. But that is our prerogative, to interview them during council meeting and determine whether we want to approve or deny that property.
You're going to do that tonight?
Yes.
The other thing is, I just find it interesting. You're inviting people in and we have a guy, Josh Lindsay, that lives here that wanted to buy that property next to Jeff and brush his beauty.
I have nothing to do with that. That is entirely.
Well, the thing is, it was condemned. Now, he bought two previous properties that were condemned and turned them into beautiful places.
That's fine, but I have nothing to do with the fact that he had trouble getting that one property and it was denied. That is not me.
How could you not, in the city of Menneson, as a titular head, not have anything to do with that?
Because that was entirely a county thing.
You can't, you don't talk with the county?
I can talk to the county, but the county has their own rules. That's land bank. They do their own thing.
This is our town, though.
I understand.
You've got a guy that did a great job, but you're going to invite people in that are quote.
I didn't invite these people in either. These are properties that were sold by the county. They offer the three taxing.
I thought you just said you invited these people here.
I did, I invited them here. I, because they were sold by the county. The county gives the three taxing.
Does the county clear that with us?
Will you let me finish?
I'm just asking, does the county clear that with us?
You won't let me talk?
Yeah, I will. I just want, did they clear it with us?
I tried to explain it to you.
Go ahead.
The county sells the property, but they require consensus of the three taxing bodies, the city, the school, and the county. We are only one cog of that. Any one of the three that deny it can deny it for no reason whatsoever or we can all accept it and they get the property.
When that needs to happen, you get all three in consensus. That's why I find it interesting. But, okay. But the other thing, in the newspaper you claimed about ethnicities and color and you didn't care about any of this stuff. I'm deeply concerned. I don't care about any of that stuff either. I care about right and wrong. I sure hope you're going in that direction and not spending as much time in Washington County that I believe you are. And I sure hope that Matt Yerem is not a part of what we're doing up on the hill.
I have a question on. I don't know if I'm understanding that. Agreement with PNG, money will be held until this city manager, engineer, determines no further work will be done. The city will receive forty-five thousand in reparation. Does that mean the, no more work is being done on those Marion Schrader and Cross?
No, it does not. I'll try to explain that when we get to that point. But what it boils down to is PNG did the digging. They tore up the road. By ordinance, they have to repave it. Our engineer says, hey, wait a second now. We don't want to pave it yet because we may need to do something with the sewer system. He's got to put a camera down it and so forth. As soon as he completes his work and either he digs it up again or not, I don't know, we have the money in escrow that we can then pave that road. And that's what that's all about. We just don't want to pave the road, dig it up, and then have to pave it again. It will get paved. It's just we want to do it in a timely fashion where we only do it once. The same thing's happened on Mont Raver and, the circle up there with Mont Raver.
So, that forty-five thousand plus, that's just being held until?
Until which time is our engineer determines that he's not going to be digging it up or not.
I understand. Following in, oh, purchase of equipment for the streets and park departments. I know that's not a lot of money, eighty-five hundred. But what, what sort of equipment will be purchased?
That's mostly tools and that's, that's, what this is, is a motion to allow us to make application for the LSA grant. And what they did is they put together a list of tools that they wanted and that's what that amounts to.
I see.
We can get you a copy of that at the grant.
Okay. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for talking to someone about the flag. As you come into the city, I see the Pennsylvania flag is below the.
By three feet.
American flag.
Half the width of the, of the American flag. I learned something, too. All right, thank you. Does he have any old business they'd like to bring forth? In which case, I'd like to ask the solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I want to talk about that PNG agreement. That was worked on with the engineer and the gas company. My only recommendation with it is the city sets aside those funds in a separate account so they're not co-mingled with the general fund. Probably come next spring, the, you know, it's hard to keep track of those things. That would be my only recommendation. Otherwise, that agreement is pretty self-explanatory. The city actually entered into a similar agreement maybe a year or so ago. It was involving work with the gas company. It may have been on Motherall. It was tied in then to a CDBG project.
Reed, yes.
Reed, similar agreement. Also on tonight's agenda, you'll see an agreement with PennDOT. It just basically says that the road's not going to be changing locations. It's a requirement that PennDOT needs to complete that project. Exemption applications were filed for four fifty Chestnut and ten forty-nine Knox. Those are city-owned properties. Just a reminder to send the request for exoneration to the school district and county. Council acted to exonerate those back taxes last meeting. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Ask our city treasurer, she has a report for us.
I have no report for this meeting, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And our city controller?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The general fund Shawley Federal Savings Bank checking account, the reconciliation as of August thirtieth, 2024. The beginning bank balance as of July thirty-first, 2024 was eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and eight cents. Deposits made, hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and five cents. Expenses, three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents. The ending balance as of August thirtieth, 2024 was seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Outstanding checks, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Outstanding deposits, four thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. The reconciliation balance to the bank statement is seven hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and fifteen cents. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, let's see. At this time, I'll talk about some of the things that have been going on this past couple of weeks. For one thing that's kind of important to understand is our 2023 budget has twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars in a reduction from the fiscal year 2023 administrative fees to further fund LMI activities such as playground equipment. The 21 budget also has fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars left over from the Third Street paving that we did. The point of all this is, we actually have money budgeted in the 2023 budget to do Ninth Street, at least a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. The engineering estimates are a little bit higher than that. So, Ninth Street has a good possibility of being done. But we need to have a public hearing for this. So, we were going to schedule a public hearing to be held on Monday, October the seventh. And this will be a CDBG public meeting to discuss right here. It will be to discuss the reallocation of the 21 funds, the 23 funds, and the 24 budget so we can get it all wrapped up in one. We need that 24 budgeted done because on October the tenth, council needs to pass our, what we want to do with that money. And we need to take all this input in from the people. I would invite council to try to make it to that particular meeting. It's, it'd be pretty important, but we'll try to provide information to those that don't make it. I've got a lot of other notes here. I'll just wait until we get to those places to talk about them. But those, the CDBG is really coming together quite well and I think that it's going to allow us to do some good in some of the areas that needs the worst.
Roads?
Roads, yes. Can I indulge upon you to read my motions for me?
Got you. B is just, good evening, everyone. B is just the approval of the PennDOT resolution to permit a right-of-way in work parameters for the upcoming construction activities at the Reedover Third Viaduct Repair Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'd like to point out that they will take ownership of the Viaduct while they do this demolition or do this renovation. When they get finished with it, then we get the bridge back. And that's just the way that this, that works.
Do they have an idea, did they give an idea about how long that would take?
A long time.
I think, I think they said two months.
That's not bad. I thought you were going to say like eighty-six months or something.
Which, as long as we're talking about projects, well, let's go ahead. Any other questions on this? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to approve change order number four for the Phase Three A sewer rehabilitation project, which is three hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-two cent reduction in a contract resulting from zeroing in out the final qualities.
Is there a second?
Quantity, sorry about that.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Motion to approve contractors' application number eight after the approval of the above referenced change order number four. The new balance owed to the contractor will be reduced to an amount of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-seven cent.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to make this, to clarify this. This is, the amount of the retainment that we retain will be reduced by twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. Okay. Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes.
Discussion of proposed utilization of the Civic Center by the NEOMI of Menneson CDC to initiate a program at the center to help reduce drug, alcohol, and vaping among our middle school and high school youth sponsored by SBHS grant monies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
It's obviously a great program.
Right.
There's no doubting that.
Right.
But my question is, under the current untimely and very unfortunate passing of our representative director down there.
Yes.
The Civic Center is in a mess right now. Let's just put it the way it is.
Well, we've been managing it, but it's a problem, yes.
Okay. We still don't have any solution for keeping it secure, to my knowledge. I understand there is a list of things and I will not go into them. I'll let Karen feel comfortable during the portion saying a few things about the Civic Center, the things that need done to it or have been brought out to people's attention. My feeling is before we, except for, of course, basketball should be starting very soon, shouldn't it?
Yes, yep.
Okay, now that's a major thing there. We need to get our own house in order before we. I think we need to get our own house in order of a direction, securing the place, putting rules, regulations, if that may need be, or anything else before we start letting other people start to come in and use the Civic Center. I know it's a civic thing. I know it's something that should be utilized and it's shameful that it's not utilized in the city. But we have no direction. We have, to my knowledge, I don't think we even have a function. we have no direction. We have, to my knowledge, I don't think we even have a functional rec board. And until you put that in place, with the exception that we don't want to turn the youth away from basketball, this isn't, this could be still a mess. And I, I, I can't see us doing anything, whatever, until we clean our own house.
Well, first off, I don't think it's quite as dire as you think. We do have some issues that we need to get handled. We need a new manager to, to manage that facility. Right now, Mike is running over there many times throughout the day, opening and closing and making sure it works. There is a video system over there, so it is not without security altogether, but there is a lot to be done there.
What about the key situation?
We've got keys under control at this point.
Okay.
Don't go in and around without Mike there right now.
So we changed the locks again?
They're, they're, they are secured.
Do we change the locks?
I believe the, the locks have been changed. I believe so, yes.
Again?
Again. The front door, the only door that was concerned.
Okay, because nobody told me about that. Do we have a PO in for the locksmith?
No, no PO.
I'm going to drag you guys because this is what we're supposed to do.
So that was done at no cost.
I don't care. Well, then you put the PO in, and you, then you put in a PO no cost.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay, but again, going forward, what about the rec board? Where's the direction of the rec authority? Not authority, sorry, the board. How many people are on it, or is, is it functional?
It is not.
Have they met?
No, it is not functional. Yeah, I think that it is completely defunct, that we need to, to start all over again with that. And that's something that council needs to, to put together. I don't think that that really affects what they're trying to do here. That would be a well-supervised event there. But, just like the basketball is a well-supervised event.
But this is just proposed, nothing, they haven't even gotten a grant.
Right, right. I mean, we don't, we're not saying the schedule, it'd have to be coordinated. I know that Teresa has a bunch of programs scheduled. It's got to be done in conjunction. She's got the same kind of thing going on.
I, I still get that, but what I'm concerned about is the ball starts rolling, and the ball starts getting bigger, and we haven't had our parts and pieces put in place yet, and before you know it, it's not a controllable atmosphere. We can't put the cart in front of the horse.
But, okay, but what we'd be saying is that we're not interested in working with the youth to eliminate drug, alcohol, and vaping. Wait, wait, no, no, wait, wait, let's, let me finish, because that has to be submitted tomorrow, by first of the week. And they have to have the ability to say that we have permission to use the rec.
That, that brings me another point that I'll have a problem with. You're telling me this needs to be done by tomorrow? And why is council only seeing this right now?
That's right.
Because we only heard about it. Ernie, be quiet. Be quiet. Be quiet. Hush, hush.
I don't like making decisions that I just hear of five minutes before they're here. I am not for that at all. I don't care who it is.
They'll vote for it.
There's nothing to vote on. It's a discussion.
Yeah, all it is is a discussion.
Yeah, but come on, have, have crazy. Ron, do you guys have a job description? Have you actually posted anything yet for the position yet?
I've seen a job description, but why haven't we advertised again for the position? Karen, I didn't mean to say anything, I'm sorry.
Well, I had looked online for a sample job description from which could, you know, you could pick and choose what you wanted, because it's been a concern of mine for a while that there was really no one in charge. And I, I don't know how you let people in that building without one of us.
Move forward, or be quiet. I'm sorry, you get closer. Be quiet. Nobody can hear.
Do you want me to repeat what I said?
No, what did you say?
I said I had looked online, and I'd gotten a sample job description, which I forwarded to the mayor and Mike to look at and, and pick out and choose what we would want. Because I really feel strongly that we need a qualified person in that position who can move that center forward, because I real, I think it's a, like a gem, but it needs somebody there who can move it forward.
Be quiet, be quiet.
Okay, you, you know what, then? That would be very nice if people in this room and the community would step up and say, let me be on that committee to help you. I have said before, when I've needed people to help, and I've never had anybody raise their hand and say, please, let me help.
Be quiet, be quiet, be quiet.
Now, every time, you need, we need help.
If you interrupt again, I'm going to ask you to be removed.
We, I don't know that we know that yet. If you want to call it supervisor, no, it was just a template that we could choose. How much authority do you want this person to have? I think they should have some experience in running such a facility and be willing to do whatever it takes to get that building in order. If it needs cleaned, they need to clean. I would be willing to have a committee of people to go in there and get that place sparkling, so when you walk in, it's a showplace. I know we don't have money to do a lot of things, but I, it doesn't take much to clean and to make it look nice. And if there's anybody in here, or anybody out there, when they see this video that wants the help, call the city building and, and say, I want to help. They'll be put on a list. We can meet with them and get a community consensus. I mean, I think it's important. We need a place for these kids to go.
Don't interrupt. Just don't do it. Don't, just don't do it.
That's, that's what.
If you interrupt, I will, yes. There's not a question to answer. This is a time for council to talk. No, 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 no. Be quiet.
There's nobody on the board. There's not a board.
Don't interact with them.
But that's what I think about.
And, and I, I, you can, you. I am, I am, I am.
So, to change the direction here.
I would like to suggest that we put in a requisition to make, put in an advertisement. You can circulate that same thing that you sent us to the rest of council, let council look at it. We will put together a requisition. We will advertise for somebody to replace Julian. And then, from that point, we can talk about how we re, we can advertise for the, the board again, I guess. Or we need to sit down and re-devised a whole new plan, one or the other.
I think we need to sit down and revise a whole new plan, start from page, scratch.
Then let us do that. I agree.
There's still equipment down there that is brand-new in boxes, or things are missing. From what I've seen from that list, okay?
Be quiet.
That's, there's too many, there's too many missing pieces that aren't working yet that before we go out and roll something out to the community and say, please, we're here to help you, we're here to do whatever, we're here to do events, we're here to rent the place, we're here to do all this, we need to get our house in order.
So let's start by getting somebody to do that.
But along that, you need some other parts of the puzzle, too, that council's going to have to decide on. I would not want to be the person that says, you know what, I'll, I'll walk up to this and I'll do the best I can. And what happens in the past, there's no direction from council. There's no listing. There's no nothing. It's, here's the paper, go figure it out for yourself, and that doesn't work. It has happened before too many times. And I am not going to be for something stupid like that, okay? Wait, just wait to, to keep peace and quiet. Let's just wait till the end. I'll, I'll answer it after, when you have your thing. I appreciate it. I really will. Okay, that's a difference in discussion.
I don't disagree with you at all. I think that is an excellent idea. I still think that we need to get a person to devote some time to it. They can come to us and give us suggestions. We can go back to them with suggestions, and we can meet at a time, at a future time to determine all this.
Here, here's the frustrating thing, and I'm just going to say it in the room. We have beat this down the road for at least six months to a year. And we talk about it. We talked about, we sat here.
You're saying that the last six months or a year, we haven't run a, a successful program, and we did. Julian ran a very successful program.
I'm not talking about Julian and how he did the programs. I'm talking about all the problems and situations that have happened at the Civic Center. Okay, I can, we can go all the way down to Karen begging and saying, before a key, do we turn around and put a, a combination key pad on there so the key, it could be changed? This council, someone said, and I don't remember who, so I'm not going to save names, specifically said, there's too many keys out there. There's keys everywhere. Everybody has a key. That's nice. We don't do a damn thing about it. We talk about it, but we don't do a damn thing about it.
Well, we have done lots of things about it, and we've addressed them every time these things come up. It is not open.
Yes, it is, because I've, I've been inside there at six o'clock in the morning, the door's open. What are you talking about?
That's a concerning thing, if that's really true.
Well, first off, the.
I drove dinner, parked my car and drove inside.
Wait, 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 wait.
Call me if that happens again.
But I understand that some of the boys, is it the boys' room? One of the urinals is busted and everything else? Those are things that we can clean up tomorrow.
And they are getting cleaned up.
When? And Karen's reporting this stuff and saying there's a problem.
Public Works not over there, does anything?
I was told that they were down there today looking at the lights, but.
But if they don't know, they can't react to it. And from what I'm understanding is this has been ongoing for quite a while.
I, I, I think that, okay.
So let's make it an effort, then, to do what needs to be done on a daily basis right now and hope people come to Karen, well, I hate to say you, Karen, but I mean, if people come and want to be part of a group and get, get involved, that we can do that, but I just want votes.
All right, but it's not even a vote, so we're, we're done.
True, that's true.
Thank you. We're done with that one.
There was no vote.
There is no vote.
Was, there wasn't, there has to be a vote.
Yeah, it was just a discussion item.
Discussion related to.
Wait, yeah, wait a minute. That doesn't make sense to me. Thank you for mentioning that.
We, we could, we, because it's on the agenda, I do believe, and solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong. We can manipulate this to make it a motion, as long as we don't deviate from the subject matter.
So, do they need approval from the city to submit this grant?
No. No.
Okay.
So the thing, the con, the issue about that they need to know tomorrow has no relevance here.
Right, just making everybody aware of it.
Just, this was getting very confusing.
Discussion related to the equipping of the new Ford F- five fifty dump truck recently acquired. We are investigating the equipment of the truck with a new electric plow and spreader for twenty thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. Retrofitting the truck to accept a hydraulic plow and spreader, we already have for eighteen thousand dollars. We're pursuing the possibility of getting a retrofit for hydraulic system at an amount at or about fifteen thousand dollars.
That's the three choices we have right now. I'm not saying that we're going to purchase any one of the three right now. I'm just simply saying that that's what we're doing.
Is that the right one to put on?
All three of those solutions will work. Two of the solutions are, are using existing equipment, and one of them is brand-new plow and, and spreader. Okay, let's continue on.
Motion to upgrade the route are currently in place with a new model to maintain our security and performance of the network in City Hall.
I apologize. I have a question. Now, what's the thing here? It says discussion.
Right.
We didn't have a discussion.
Okay, well, we'll go back to that. If you want to talk, talk.
Well, again, this is the time to bring up pros and cons, or questions and things like that from council before this becomes finally, yes, we're going to do something, and this is what we're going to do.
Right.
Because I don't want to have the same thing happen next meeting, where we sit here and say, we make a motion to do X, Y, or Z, and is there a discussion? And then there's comments and questions, and why are we doing this, or what's the best thing to do this? When apparently this is what is supposed to happen now. Am I, am I losing it?
No, go for it.
So again, the first and foremost thing, and this is like, who's on first? We need to get a plow and either a new spreader or to use an existing spreader on a brand ninety thousand dollar truck that we got at the street, guys. I'm sure, at this point, they're starting to laugh at us and say, just put, show us snow shovels in front and see if we push it along and see if that works. But I was an advocate, and I still am, over the twenty thousand, eight thirty-one, which is from Zaresco. And I'm not going to ask anybody or put anybody's butt out of their opinion, because I'm not going to do that. I'm sure they've already ventured their opinions, which I appreciate. But that twenty thousand, eight thirty-one is to take our existing truck and put a brand-new plow, electronics, electric, and all the front end on it, and a auger-driven spreader for the salt in the back, a brand-new one. Any lights that need to be on it, anything of that nature, whatever. The other one is to take eighteen thousand and have the truck, I believe, modified to accept the extra, and I want to get this right, the, oh, God.
It's a high-down plow splitter.
Well, no, it's not. It's the name of the, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you one question, and that's it. What's the name of the, of the, of the proper name of the swell spreader? The hopper, thank you. I couldn't, it just wasn't coming across. They currently have hoppers, which are V-shaped. He takes the big truck, they put them in, they bolt them down, they snap them down, they put them in the bed and do their thing. The difference between the twenty thousand dollar one and the retrofit eighteen thousand dollar one is they have an extra hopper spreader. We also have an extra older plow. Doesn't matter if it's western, or whoever it is, okay? They have an extra setup. That is the retrofit to what we currently have. I was proposing that we get a brand-new plow and electronics up front and in the cab. And instead of having a hopper, which we have the extra hopper, I'm thinking just me, just me. They say, we keep that just in case one breaks, that are on the other four tra, other five, five trucks? Four. Four, other four trucks. And we have a brand-new spreader in the back. Now, the only difference with this is, and I don't know if this is a pro or con, that's why this has got bounced around so much, is the one now, street crew, he gets the big truck, scoops it, puts it in the hopper, says bye, gets ready for the next truck. With the gravity feed, new spreader, he would fill the whole bed of the truck up in the back. And as gravity feeds the salt through, there's an auger that drives it through a thrower spreader. That's in the twenty thousand dollar, eight thirty-one, okay? Now, the only difference of it is, when the hopper empties, it's empty, when the new spreader gets empty or gets close to being down, every so often, through a light that I was told comes on from Zaresco to let you know the, how much is in there, they would have to stop, lift the bed up a little bit and let the salt come down, put it back down, and then continue on their way. That's the only difference between a hopper, gravity fit, and, and I believe through the one that we're looking to have replaced. Now, they both work. They both work. The question is, do we want to go back and retrofit to hydraulic? Or, which a lot of municipalities use. Look, I, I've talked to the people, I've talked to Zaresco, I've talked to the company we got the quote from, that you guys got. I've tried to get a well-rounded idea of, is there a pro and con, or is it a flip the coin? This is it, this is the way to go. It's the way, it just happens to be that way. But the electric is new technology. And Zaresco even told me, is there a big difference between performance? No. Do you have to do it? Do you have to do a couple more things maybe with the gravity fed versus the hopper? Yes, one or two. But my feeling on it was, and this is just my feeling again, for two thousand dollars more, we're planning and putting a brand-new plow and electronics on the front of a brand-new truck that we just bought and a brand-new, uh, spreader on the back. Now, which may make some advantages to the, to the street guys in the future, and I'm not sure, and I can't speak for it. I'm sure they have to be careful and they're very skillful in trying to take that hopper out of there every year and put it back so it doesn't- it's not just lift it out and pull it out of the fourth truck, I'm sure it isn't, okay? The spreader, pin, pin, comes right off. It utilizes the whole bed of the truck for some time. It's like, i- i- it's like we could sit in here and ask for a raise of hands and say, well, what do you guys think? What makes sense? Well, I like this, no, I like this. You know, we just want the best thing that works for the street department. But again, my last thing and I'll comment on it is, for two thousand dollars more, instead of outfitting the truck and retrofitting it to a possible, possible technology that's starting to get phased out, it would be nice to have from front to back, everything that's completely brand-new. That's only my feeling.
It only makes sense.
And I, I don't know how old the plow is that we currently have. If it's old, it's rusted, I'm sure it's not completely rusted, but I mean if it's three, four, or five years old, those trucks- Rosalie, do you remember, uh, how old those trucks are? I mean, when we, when, you think you were on council when we did that last time? Five years? Five years, six years?
I believe they're two thousand and nineteen vehicles.
Okay, because we just paid them off a year ago, okay? So, my only push is, I'm just putting it out publicly that, you know, whatever's best for our street people, street guys to have. But, it just makes more common sense to me to have, might be a little bit different inside the cab to have to flip a switch or do a couple things and I'm not sure, it might be more maneuverable in the end and have the all-electric. I know everybody in Dustin is used to, hey, we got a hydraulic hose bust, we got to go down to go get it. You don't do that no more. There's no hydraulic fluid, there's no safety. There's, I mean, there's not, when I say no safety, there's no safety issue that it might spray and hit somebody. You don't have to worry about keeping hydraulic fluid and things like that. I'm just looking forward, so-
Why don't you buy a truck with all this equipment and what does it mean?
Well, if you remember, if you might remember, before we purchased this truck, okay? I found two trucks in Ohio. They were for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and they had, the one truck had the big V power plow on it, which is all adjustable and everything. And it had the new spreader, it would lights, it was completely decked out. We proposed and talked about it at council here, okay? And at that time, the easier, matter of fact, we even advertised for bids on it. And it was a hundred and fifteen thousand, brand-new, front to back. The difference on, and some of the questions came out, was what about our, we have an old plow? Well, we have a hopper, okay? One of the biggest things, and I thank Heppel for bringing this to my attention, that I didn't realize, one or two of the reasons for it was he really, really, really wanted a diesel. And I wasn't quite grasping why until he was polite enough to tell my wife and say, because you can't get gas in the middle of the night in downtown Vanessa, which makes sense, thank you. And, we looked at other things, but the bigger factor why we didn't go with the hundred and fifteenth, which wasn't much more than the ninety, was we were taking it out of our money anyways, was our Solicitor showed us that, look, it's easier if you go, if you could find it in PA and it's Co-Stars, because then it's a no-brunt, it's a no done, it's a done deal, am I right, Joe?
Yeah, but we also, you put out an advertisement.
Yeah, we put an advertisement too.
By the time we got the advertisement, the truck got sold though.
Yes.
It's still the same price.
It's still, yeah, you're right. But now the truck's gone, as any commodity, when you look at stuff like that, this is the time of year, they're not in stock, you can't find them, everybody's starting to buy them for, so that's how we settled on, we found this truck locally down Allegheny Truck Rentals down in Pittsburgh. Brand-new for ninety thousand, so that's, Mr. Ferrier, that's the background for that? Hello?
It's the same, it's the same price, that's not the problem. That's not the problem.
I'm still from the old school, you, we asked them and considered them what truck they wanted, because it was diesel. If you have people who are performing the job, I think you should definitely consider what they want to use for that. But here's my thing, I do a job. And if anyone came in and I, I do the job daily, I know what we need, I know what we're looking for. But then someone comes in and says, no, we want this, but no, I do the job, so I know what we need. So I think the same thing applies to our work crew. They do the job, we might not go along with what they say, but they are doing this job on a daily basis. They know what works best for them. You know, we might not agree with that, but they, they want the hydraulic. So, I still say you, you listen to the guys who perform the job on a daily basis. We only have seven guys, they know what works best for them.
You can talk to the street department?
We have, the only, the only, the only issue I see that could happen to come with a hydraulic plow is, again, we're using an, our old extra-
You didn't grab what she said, what did they want?
They want hydraulic. They want hydraulic.
They want hyd- hydraulic should be that.
Why are we having a discussion?
The only concern I would have is that, uh, the service that we put this equipment under is extremely caustic. The salt is really bad. And, uh, even on the hoppers that we have now, the, uh, the chains and so forth require constant lubrication. They are not just trouble-free. By the same token, there is a electric plow sitting out in the yard right now that they have, because they don't know how to fix it. At least they understand how to fix the hydraulic stuff, and that's one of the big concerns. Anyway, we can-
It's a discussion item.
That's all it is. I think that the real thing that we really are trying to accomplish here, what I was trying to get accomplished was, there is a third option, fifteen thousand dollars, which will save us not two thousand dollars, but closer to, to five thousand dollars if, if, if they can do the same thing. That's why we're going to take the truck to them to get it inspected, to get them to look at it and say, yeah, we can or can't. Next week, it's Monroeville, Monroeville. Okay, let's continue on, unless you can, you don't want to speak this anymore today.
Motion to upgrade the router currently in place with a new model to maintain our security and performance of the network in City Hall at a cost of three thousand six hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. This is expected to serve us for three years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'm, I'm not going to get into this. The bottom line is that we have an opportunity right now to buy a router at a discounted price of about twelve hundred bucks. The router that we have will serve us probably for another year and six months. We do need to invest in updating the license, but as far as that's concerned-
Can we table this?
I don't want to table it, I want to, I would prefer to go to a vote. Well, is there a second for, for table?
What, what the table to security of our city did building? I don't think that should be tabled.
Okay, well, is there no second? Then let's call-
There's a second on the motion.
There was a second on the motion, there was no second on the, the motion to table it, so. Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Shh, be quiet, be quiet, be quiet.
Why doesn't that surprise me or anything?
Be quiet.
I think it's the wrong direction we're going in, but-
Have you ever been hacked?
I do IT every day.
You do?
I'd like to sustain, but I can't do that, so. My problem, my per- It's, it's not the thirty-six forty-nine. It's the way- Well, you know what? I will say yes, but next meeting I'm going to want to ask to put an RFP out for you.
I don't disagree with that at all. I would like to point out that, well, but we're still discussing, we're voting, voting, I can't talk anymore. I vote yes.
Mayor motion. This is like putting a Band-Aid on a fire hydrant. You have a, you have a vote.
We, we did, I did, it passed, it passed.
Authorized the additional repairs to our international seventy-four hundred five-ton dump truck at Harbaugh Power Products for three thousand one hundred and forty dollars. This includes power steering pump alternator, pitman arm, belts, and labor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Is this the big inner, the big dump?
Yes.
This is the same dump we just put twenty thousand dollars in?
No, we put about six thousand dollars to get a new turbocharger, but it wasn't twenty thousand dollars.
Have all of us that truck?
It's also a two thousand and nineteen.
I was afraid you were going to say something.
This isn't the old truck that's out in the back, this is the one that's in-
It's, it's ancient, that's the big one, right? Yeah. I, I mean, again, this gets back to getting the street guys what they need. I don't have a problem with that, but I got to keep explaining myself that we're still pouring money into a beast that is so old that's ridiculous.
Not having new ones.
No, that's going to be about three hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, we don't have any new ones.
But, we just have a brand-new ninety thousand dollar truck we just bought. Why can't it replace it?
What, do you want to junk it for three thousand dollars?
No, it's not three thousand, how much did we put into it previously?
But it's only three thousand now to get it out of there. I think we're going to have closer to eight or nine thousand into it before we're done, yes.
Plus what we just put in the turbocharger?
That includes the turbocharger.
That includes six thousand.
On something that's thirty-seven years old? Forty years old?
Well, it's been- Any other discussion items on it? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski? Here we go again. Does this get it completely ready or is somebody going to come back next month and say, oh, we found this?
I hope this is the last of the problems, I truly do.
No, I want to put on record that that happened.
I, I, you can't guarantee it, but I, I, best I can tell, the guy says that he will do the final inspection as part of the cost. He believes that this is all that it needs, he says this truck will be in top condition, that's what he tells me.
We will hold his feet to the fire next time.
Absolutely. Yes. Mayor motion?
Yes. Is Matthew Nask, and I'm going to butcher this name, Naskenmentu here?
Naskenmentu. Naskenmentu.
Is he here? Okay.
No, just the one that's here.
This, this particular individual, for whatever it's worth, and it's not worth a whole lot, did not give a proper phone number for contact to the tax claim bureau when he bought the property. He lives in, he's got a New York address. And we sent him a certified letter asking him to come here and show us what he wanted to do with this house. By failing to show up, I would suggest that we deny acquisition of this property. Could you make such a motion?
Uh, motion to deny acquisition of property twenty dash zero two dash zero three dash zero dash two nine two from the repository.
Is there any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Is that the four fourteen fourth?
I don't believe so. I honestly don't remember. Is Mr. Malcolm here? Would you like to come forward for us, please? First off, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I guess the, the thing is, we, we don't know you, you're coming to our city, what do you plan to do with this house?
Um, this will be my first house, um, I've been renting. Yes.
There's a microphone. Wait, we have a microphone.
Um, this is, uh, four fourteen Forest Street. Um, I, this is my first house, I never owned a house before. This, this better?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this is my first house, I never owned a house before. The market is, is pretty stacked and, um, this is one of the easier ways to get a home in order to be able to, you know, build it from scratch and work on it and things like that.
Are you planning on living in this house or you want to rent it or what?
Um, the purpose is to, is to rent the house and try to ease myself with subsidized income. That way, um, I can be able to, um, you know, have something to pass down to my son later on.
Okay, and you're going, you are within reason to, to be able to do this work? You, you, uh, have the resources, you, 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 uh, can travel here or, where do you actually live?
Yes, sir, um, I stay in Rochester, New York. Uh, that's about four and a half hours away. I made the drive about five times now over the past two months.
Do you have a local person that you're working with that's going to help you with coordinating all the local activities to get this place renovated?
No, sir, um, I have not, um, spoken to anyone necessarily here in order to get those things done. Um, I went, I, me speaking to Lisa over at the tax assessment office, uh, she told me the best thing to do is to make sure that I'm able to secure the property. And then once that is all done, then I can be able to move forward, because it's not guaranteed, even though I made the payment. Um, it's still up to the council whether you guys are going to approve or deny me.
Right.
So-
And the school and the county also have to go through the same thing, yes.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Do you think they have any other questions?
How much do you plan on putting in to it as renovations cost?
Yes, um, so I've done renovations with my uncle in, um, in Philadelphia, um, New York, um, also in Florida. And roughly to start a renovation, um, he says you probably need around thirty-five thousand dollars in order to be able to not only secure, but to make it livable, um, depending on how far bad the damages are. I wasn't able, and I'm not able to go inside the property in order to be able to assess more than what I see from outside. Um, so I can't tell you further than that, but based on his experience, that's what he gave me.
Do you currently have that much in half, in, in liquid assets?
No, sir, I do not.
So, how would you plan on putting the money into a renovation that you don't quite have finance to secure it for?
I was planning on financing it and, um, working and also putting into, um, from, you know, my own savings and things like that.
And what's the timeframe? Winter's coming, that's my question.
Understood, um, I wasn't necessarily put a gap on it, because it would be my property and I would be working on it as quickly as I possibly can in order to return over to help, you know, subsidize income and things like that, so.
Do we know if it needs a, like, say a structural re- remove? Does anybody know?
I, I believe that this was actually in pretty good shape as I recall.
From, from the outside looking in, um, it didn't seem like the roof was necessarily bad, um, and from the street view.
All the windows, I think there was only one window out or, or something, the windows are pretty solid, the roof looks pretty good. It's going to require potentially to get habitable things like, uh, plumbing issues. Plumbing tends to fail after sitting a long time, a new electric box. It's going to require some serious work, but it's a very solid structure, it appears to me. What we're primarily concerned with, to be real honest with you, is- What we're primarily concerned with, to be real honest with you, is the property that you're, you're looking at, when it makes it to the repository and is sold to somebody, it has been through a whole long series of issues. Somebody had that house and didn't pay the taxes on it for a long time. Eventually, it hit the judicial system. Judicial system exempting, got rid of all the taxes and all the liens, and they offered it for sale. Nobody wanted it at that time. It immediately then falls into the repository, and I have no idea how long this property's been the repository, but you come along and you, you look at it. So it's our concern that this property be taken by a responsible person, pays the taxes, makes it a, 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 a part of the community, that you have, I don't care if you're rented or not, that, that's, that's immaterial. Whether you live in it or rent it, but that it becomes something that's maintained and ta- and taken care of, that you can drive down the street and it's a property that you're proud of, and that's what we're concerned with.
No, I, I, I completely understand, and that's something that, um, I want as well, so I have something that I can myself be proud of, that, as I said before, to pass down to my son. That's really the game.
So, Mr., Mr. Malcolm, you said you're from Rochester.
Yes.
How did you come across the, the house here?
So, um, online, uh, there's a lot of information about, um, realty, and, um, one, one of the ways of purchasing homes is through the land bank, directly through, um, repository or whatever the case may be, even to person-to-person sale, um, were the easier ways routes to go. And so online, when you type in, uh, person-to-person sale or repository, um, every county in the United States come up.
Right, but that's Vanessa out of all these counties.
Exactly. But because I was familiar already with, um, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, um, I typed in, um, what's it called, Philadelphia, and, um, Vanessa came up, and that's how I found it.
I was wondering how little Vanessa came up for you.
Yes, ma'am. That's how it came up.
I'm satisfied.
How can you be satisfied out here in the middle of the country?
Well, because, first off, this is not, we're not gonna have a life.
So, Mike. We live in a city, so we know what we need. So, Mike, one other question. So. You haven't physically gone into the structure, right?
It is not allowed. It, it would be considered trespassing.
It's not allowed.
So it's not until I get approved by you and the two other councils, it's until I can go inside.
It's tough.
How do you purchase a home without being able to go through it? I mean, not just you, I mean, I'm just looking at this going, what happens, what is the, do you have a plan B if we okay it, you purchase it, you start your renovations, you go in and find out, two steps in, the floors are completely into the basement, they're completely gone, everything, I mean, it's more than, oh my God, I didn't expect that.
Yes, um, my father, um, is from Jamaica, and, um, he specializes in those things in Jamaica in renovations. He currently owns a house now in, in Douglasville, Georgia, and, um, so I'll be getting his help and assistance as well. He also, um, purchased the house as well, um, in, what's the place, Greenberg or something like that?
Yeah, that scenario.
Yes, so he purchased the home, and him, him and my mother are currently renovating that, um, place over there as well.
That's considerably closer.
Yes, so it's, so with them renovating that property over there, um, he will, you know, at least he said he will hel- help me, you know.
So let's just assume the worst happens, that, that for whatever reason, there's more damage there, you don't have the funds to get it done, we're a year down the road. What do you, what do you plan on doing? If we, we sit there and say, okay, this property is now condemned and subject to be demoed?
No, I, I, that, the game plan is not, not to do that at all.
What I'm saying, if everything goes awry.
Yes.
What do you, what's gonna happen if, if you've, you've walked away from it and, and you're not able to do it, we'll condemn it, we'll demo it. We always have that ability.
Y- yes, I understand you have the ability to demo it, but given the fact, it's my, you know.
I would far rather see property put back on the tax rolls as you're doing. There's no doubt about that.
Exactly. Yes, sir. Um, I'm not necessarily sure how to answer that question, to be honest with you. Um, I am kinda going into this, uh, you know, optimistic on trying to make it work.
Okay.
Does this have anything to do?
Well, I have a question, 'cause, um, unfortunately for you, a lot of people who've bought property and they live out of town, we've had bad results with them.
Okay.
So now we look at you, we, we don't know, but I'm just thinking, you live at a distance, and some of these homes that are purchased by people who live out of town, the outside of the property is a total mess, and it, and it's bad for the neighborhood.
Understood.
How do you plan to take care of property when you're not here? I mean, you contract with somebody who cuts grass and shrubbery, to at least make the outside look nice, even if you're not here, for the benefit of the neighbors and the community? And I know that's happened with the beautiful church we have here. People live in Philadelphia, they don't take care of it, and because, like you said, it'd be trespassing, the people who've said, I will pay to have that grass cut, they're not allowed to do it. So how do you plan to take care of at least the, the outside of it, so it looks kempt?
Thank you for actually answering that question, 'cause that actually falls into my wheelhouse. Uh, when I was about seventeen years old, I, that's what I started to do, was going from house to house and mowing lawns. That's how I made my money up until I was about twenty-one years old, 'cause it paid well. And that was one of the things, uh, people that lived outside of, um, Douglasville, um, that's what, how I made my money. I made it with a monthly, uh, note, and every two weeks I come by, cut the trees or cut the lawn or whatever the case may be. I even, you know, watered, watered their lawns and then watered plants and things like that, fed the dog, stuff like that, so that's typically how it goes. That, those little odd jobs are in my wheelhouse. So to do that or to hire someone is well within my grasp to do. That's actually one of the things I talked about with my wife, um, in order to get done. Also, there's apps called TaskRabbit and things like that, so even if one person or a company's unable to do it for whatever reason, I can easily, um, go onto the app and hire someone to do so.
That's easy to do. I actually have a, I actually have a cousin who lives in Maryland. He has, owns a home in California. He hired somebody to cut the grass every two weeks, and he comes in maybe once a month just to.
It's really whether you are a responsible person. That is what the, the whole question is.
Absolutely.
Be quiet. 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 He found us, not we found him. Tax Claim Bureau in Wood Greensburg.
Yes, I.
What's your timeframe?
Um, my timeframe, again, as I said to you, um, the goal is to try to get it up in livable in order to be able to, um, receive income from the house. So I'll probably say I'll give myself necessarily, um, about a year, if anything, in order to be able to try to get it in livable condition.
I mean, I was just, I was curious about because winter's coming.
Of course.
And I would imagine the drive from Rochester to Pittsburgh is not a pretty drive.
It's, 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 it's good when you have a good playlist, um, but.
Definitely is.
Definitely.
But to answer the gentleman's concerns at the tax office, they, they do take all, all your information. Um, everything is notarized. They're signed. They have, um, two addresses. I have my wife, um, and my parents', um, uh, contact information, um, that is also placed there. So I believe, yeah, we should, if you guys wanted to contact me, it's good to go. I'm in direct, consistent contact with, um, with, with Lisa down there. This isn't the first home I tried purchasing here. I was outbid about twenty-eight times, so before I was able to, um, secure this property. I said, this is my first property that I've, I've purchased. This will be my first home. I'm saying I was outbid twenty-eight times, um, by other people.
Be quiet. Hush. Is there any other questions?
No, I just think if the other guy didn't show up, this is a act of faith here, that he came from Rochester to, to make his point.
I'm impressed by the fact that he came.
Right, that's, I mean, so just the fact that he came, you know, everybody might not have been in agreement with it, but he showed up, the other guy didn't.
You're not driving back tonight, are you?
Yes, I am. Uh, it's five, but I have work in the morning, so I have to, you know, do what I gotta do.
Oh, my. We made the effort.
Absolutely.
I would, uh, suggest we accept it.
I'm making a motion to accept, um, a property, acquisition of property twenty dash zero-two dash zero-eight dash zero dash one-two-three from the repository.
Is there a second?
For Mr. Quemay Malcolm.
Is there, is, is there a second?
Second.
No other questions? Call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes. Welcome to the community.
Welcome.
Good luck.
Do I have to read this, or do you want me to read the next one, or?
No, go ahead.
Notice and discussion that there will be a well-coordinated block party on Third Street between Scootermaker and Donner this Saturday, previously authorized during our August twenty-fifth meeting. This will be a cooperative effort, including the fire department, his place, and several of the businesses in the area. All are invited to come to enjoy the celebration this Saturday, beginning at eight-thirty a.m. and running until one p.m.
Thank you. Go ahead and read the motion next. Is there any reason to discuss this?
Is there anything?
They, but we've already approved it.
I know.
Is there anything on the exhibit that's already approved, but there's no date?
There is.
Yes, it's, it's Saturday.
And it says that we, we approved this.
I'm putting in this day, September, whatever the date was, instead of Saturday.
So my only question is, Chief, is there anything we have to do for permits or anything for closing the street? Yeah, but Scootermaker's a state street.
Yeah.
Just a block in between.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and we previously authorized on the twenty-fifth. I do, who's gonna put up the cones?
I saw the light the other day. Who's gonna call Rodney?
Yep.
Motion to allow lights work at a nonprofit to work with the Parks Department in maintaining up to three planners to be identified in downtown region contingent on development and coordination of an appropriate agreement with the city of Manassas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes.
Motion to accept the agreement with P and G for the follow-up paving on Marion. Money will be held until city engineer determines that no further work will be done involving further road repair on Marion, Schrader, or Cross Streets. The city will receive forty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cent in reparation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes. What do we, do we have to at a later time make, or I will say, make, yeah, we do have to make a motion to, about the forty-five thousand that we're gonna get from them.
Mm-hmm.
Joey beat me to it when he had his report, and that is, I wanna make darn sure that that money goes into a separate account, and it is not spent, it is not taken from something else, 'cause I guarantee you, if it goes in a general fund, it's gonna be gone and it won't be there.
No problem.
I want guaranteed that that money goes, and future monies for street repairs, go into a, a line account, like we did Refuge. Refuge.
I'm wondering if something was already set up when you guys did that for the CDBG project a couple of years ago.
I think there might be, yeah.
There might be. I think we changed banks since then, too, so they have dissolved.
Yeah, that's the only issue. I mean, it's as simple as creating a sub-account to the general fund and.
Right. I mean, we have qualified, the city clerk's very well qualified to keep that separate and distinct from the general fund, but a separate bank account could be done as well. I have no issue with that either.
The city clerk has nothing to do with it, in my opinion, because quite frankly, they can, uh, making the move for moving funds out of there to somewhere else could be as simple as a motion from council, and one of council members can get outvoted and it goes. So I don't think the city clerk has anything to do with it. I wanna make sure this goes in an account. It's not gonna be touched. It's gonna be used for s- for paving. We're getting out of it because we're gonna have to add to it anyways, but it doesn't go anywhere, or I don't hear we have to use money for to pay this, but it doesn't matter, we have to do it. I don't wanna hear that.
If I can get more into why it's important, and I probably should've did this as part of my report, part of the agreement, P and G's gonna come back and look at the work to make sure the money they gave the city was spent appropriately in making these repairs.
Right. We're holding them to, for their feet to the fire anyway.
They're, they're also holding the city's feet to the fire as well.
Yes, yes, yes. Any other comments? I will, I will, I will, I will check tomorrow with, with the.
So my, my question is, do we need to, for next meeting, have a motion to agree on this, uh, on account?
Why would we need to?
Because we did that for the refuge.
If we're, if we're gonna receive this money, can, can we include that as part of this into a special account?
You sure can.
This, so, did, this, the city will receive forty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents in reparation held in a, in a separate account?
Yep.
It says paving.
It says paving.
There's, there's a, an amended motion needs a second.
Second.
Okay. No other questions? Call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve local share account category, category four facilities program application for purchase of equipment for the number one and number two fire companies for emergency management equipment in amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve local share account category four facilities program application for the purchase of equipment for the streets and parks departments of the city of Manassas in amount of eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any questions? Call her, go ahead.
Are we asking, that's a very exact figure.
You have to have exact figures. You have to have quotes to make the difference.
No, how did we come up with that exact figure?
With the streets department.
With the streets department.
Rodney and the group, of what they felt they needed.
That's all I, I didn't know that.
Okay, call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve and pay from the fire escrow account to sixty-four over hill dri- over hill drive from the fire damage emanating at that address in amount of nine thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
No, any questions?
Could I just ask, what is that? 'Cause I've never seen this before.
If a place burns, we take the money and put it into an escrow account. If the people rebuild, complete the work, to get everything back where they're living in the house again, we give that money back to them.
Would that be for anybody?
Yes.
It's for anybody that has homeowner's insurance, obviously.
Oh.
That's just to make sure they don't get the homeowner's insurance and leave a dilapidated property.
Burnt, just like on Sixth Street. Like on Sixth Street, yeah.
Call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve and forward payment to Manassas House Number One in amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-six cent, and Manassas House Number Two in amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cent for the allocation of funds from the Auditor's General Office for the yearly foreign eye fire insurance tax premium.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Call her off. Counselperson Co- Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes. Thank you. That was a lot of reading. I do appreciate it so much. Councilman Or- Orzutowski, your turn.
I think I spoke enough tonight. Can I just pass mine off till next month? I'll do it quickly. Thank you. Motion to transfer sixty-six thousand sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents from the general account to the payroll account for payroll issues on September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of sixty thousand two sixty-eight twenty-four. All invoices are attached as agenda's attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. All invoices are attached as agenda's attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call her off.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor's motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from Liquid Fuels Account in amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. All invoices are attached to the.
All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Line Usage Account in amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, fifty cents. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Refuge Account in amount of forty-nine thousand, five ninety-one, seventy-three. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from the general fund to the healthcare account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four retiree healthcare benefits in amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and five dollars and two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
For some reason or other, I really feel the desire that I should really talk for thirty minutes on this motion, but I won't.
Are you trying to tell me something?
Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Costner?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
But know about you talking. Uh, okay. American Rescue Fund has sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. Debt Service has one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents. Fire Escrow Fund is twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents. General Fund has five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Grant Fund has seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Healthcare Fund has three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and nine cents. Line Usage has six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. Liquid Fuels Fund has forty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Parks Fund has a hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and three dollars and forty-three cents. Payroll has thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents. Recreation has four thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. And the Refuge, Refuge, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Mayor, I'm done. That's my report.
Thank you so much.
All right, Streets Department report for August twenty twenty-four. Picked up garbage downtown twice a week, marked eighty-five PA one calls. Cold patched several streets, put up signs throughout the city and painted curbs throughout the city. Fixed a void in a road on the four-hundred block of Knox Avenue. Painted crosswalks by the school, removed the dead tree from East Gate Island, cut city lots and sidewalks, had several pickups, prepared for the Labor Day weekend, and helped the Parks, helped the Parks Department as needed. That is my report, Mayor.
Thank you. John's not here, so we'll have to get him next time. Karen, do you have a report for us?
I do. Collected garbage and litter in the parks, cleaned the civic center as needed, cut the parks and ballfields, cleaned the pavilions for scheduled events, fixed the fence at Madison Street Park, Madison Park, put in a new doggy waste station at Madison Park, and the new batting cage at Shawnee Park was completed and helped the Streets Department as needed. That's my report, and if anybody out there would like to sign up for a committee to help beautify Manassas or do whatever other jobs we come up with, which as yet aren't set in stone, please email me or call me, because we need, we need help from everybody in this town to get this, so we look good again. We're proud of our city, because I think it deserves it.
One thing. Are you done?
I'm done.
Uh, one thing I'd like to make sure that everybody understands too is, uh, we received an MS four report this mor, this morning. The MS four report is the report that's provided to the DEP that tells them how we're handling our stormwater. That is something that we have to take an active role in. It's by decree. We have no choice. But one of the things that they say is we need to have a street cleanup this fall. We're running out of this fall. We need to organize a street cleanup this fall, organized by the city. So, we need to pick a date. We need to do this. This is by decree by the DEP, so.
Well, I know the past, Lois, you always coordinate those events. I did it last time. I'm willing to help. I mean, we still have this. We have money in the account to buy food. We have our little picker-upper things. We're ready to go. We just have to pick a date.
Just need to pick a date. I would suggest that, uh, maybe after the session, tomorrow, everybody think about their calendars and suggest a date. Uh, think that we ought to put an ad in the newspaper and advertise it. Uh, this is by decree. We have no choice. So, let's do the best we possibly can.
Mayor, real quick on that, I'm sitting in that MS four meeting with a mic up there too. Uh, I didn't realize how big a deal it really was to clean up, but DEP does want it done. They also want you to put it on your website, and it was done, and what the date is, right?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm very aware of that.
Has this happened before? I mean, is this a new thing?
We, we did clean up spit, oh, go ahead, John.
The MS four? It's been around probably twenty fifteen-ish.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
To be honest, I just, it was off my radar. I got the thing today and I said, oh my goodness, we got to do this.
Do we still have that leaf picker-upper truck? Do we still have the leaf picker-upper truck?
I'm sure that we can find a truck, Public Works, to take, to take the leaves.
Well, I thought it backed into the leaves.
Oh, that. I don't believe we do. I have no idea. I haven't, never seen that.
We just have this. Do we still have it? No, we just have this.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to the, to myself for any items related to business ordinance, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product that we can handle.
Ernest Telegraphus. I just want to make one big comment, then I have one question for Tony, the CFO. Number one. The main problem here, and this is why I, I come to the meetings, because I come here as a taxpayer, and since the majority of taxpayers don't participate in coming down here so they can have an input into where the money goes and how it's spent, and how to make council responsible for all the mandates that are put on us. So, I'm here to do my best to enlighten the public, as well as to interact with the council members so they could try to do a better job of what they're supposed to do. The first thing that I want to make a comment, if you don't have the right people in these committees, just trying to find one person to spearhead a project like the Civic Center, ain't going to do it, okay? And you don't look for, you don't go out of your way every day or every week to find people to fill these positions, okay? You put me on the planning commission, and three times, they, they postponed the meetings. And it seems like, I'm waiting here on standby, because the other two called the shots. And I, I figured, everybody that you guys select, they're all kubaiya buddies. And, and that's the problem with Manassas. You can't just go back and say, well, he's been with us for thirty years or twenty years, or he's related to me, or he's a member of my group. That's not how you conduct a realistic, intelligent, strategic offense to make Manassas grow. And, and because of that, picking collusive buddies to be in all these circles, you guys do not look for industry. You keep looking for government agencies who take taxpayers' money, that's our money, and then they resell it back to you. You're not going to build Rome with taxpayers' money. Now, I asked you in Maine, I asked you in June, and you told me, Tony, that you will give me a synopsis, but we're going to make it to December with the funds we have going into the winter. And you said you'll have an answer in September, but this is the end of September. Do you have something to, uh, tell us, like, where are we going into October, November, December? Well, January, they get a ten note.
What's that?
She said January. I said, January, you get a ten note.
Hopefully before. Uh, currently, as of today, I don't have a crystal ball for the rest of the year. So, as I've said in all the years I've been in office and represent this, that I deal with hard facts, meaning if I got ten dollars in the bank, I can't spend fifteen.
I know, but you were supposed to provide some sort of insight into how we're going to go towards the end of the year.
It's going to be tight.
Okay, well, when you say tight, can you give us figures? If you've got it today, give it to us next time. Just so we know, like, how much is tight? You guys keep using general terms. That's why the public don't, don't know anything. And then when I come up and I ask for answers, I look like I am pounding, uh, my chest here for nothing.
Ernie, let me just, uh, say one real quick thing.
Right.
First off, we pass a budget every year. The goal of that budget is you, you budget all your money and you spend all your money. At the end of the year, you ought to end up with a zero balance.
Yeah, but you have other expenses that kick down the road.
That's right.
That's why I'm asking him, and we're going to make it to December.
And he said it's going to be tight.
Yeah, but how much is tight?
Tight is tight.
No, it will be what, fifty thousand and all, a hundred thousand and all? That's the tight I want to know. Just so we know what we're facing. The public has a right to know what they're facing. If you don't get the answer today, that's fine. Then give it to me in October. And, and I'm not trying to beat it out of you. And, and one other thing, I, I want to tell this to everybody. I've been to other organizations, and I have to say, the Manassas City Council is the most responsive as far as interacting. You go to other organizations, like the redevelopment or the school district, you can't even talk to them. They talk down to you, and a, at least here, at least here, you can interact with these gentlemen, and you'll get some answers. It may not be the answers we want, but you're going to get something.
Let me interact with you. This is not a place to make a stand.
Well, I just want to make.
Keep your questions to us.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to add some butter to your toast.
I think I'm one of, my name is Pina. And I, I'm the guy that gets thrown out for a meeting for talking out of turn. That's, that's it. But here's what I got to ask you. You know, there was a, I think Teddy Hura asked a good question last month, last month. He says, you know, how do you bring people in Manassas if you don't build the business in town? You know, bring business in, in town before the people come in. And I think you, the mayor, told them that, uh, people must come in in town first, and then business will follow. That's what you said.
I understand by that.
So, let me finish. You could ask, you could answer all my questions later. Here's what I find real difficult to understand. You had a business here in Manassas, and you shot it down. The guy, the, the guy that has the fire thing, what's his name? Buzzzy?
Yeah.
He had a business, and he's a redevelopment authority, and he shot it down. So, I don't see how people can look at you and say, here's the head of Manassas, come in, they shot their business down, and they, they're looking for people to come in. It doesn't make any sense.
Pina.
Okay.
Who got shut down?
Pardon?
Who are you talking about?
I'm talking about the mayor's business. He shot it down, the one on Third Street.
Okay.
And Buzzzy shot the steel plate down, sold it, okay? And they're in a redevelopment authority. They're supposed to be looking for work, looking for people to come in. But here's my other question. I looked at the redevelopment authority, for instance. You were in it. You were in it. Ex-mayors are in it today, right? Mary Jo Smith and, uh, the, I, I don't even know his name. I know he's the Greek. That's all I know about him, okay? So, tell me why those people, when you go to their meeting, they don't do nothing? They don't even have an agenda? At the meeting, the pledge of allegiance is longer than the meeting. That's pretty heavy. And then what the people are supposed to be looking for people to come in and make Manassas their home? And the other part is that I, I don't understand. You blame everything to the county. You say the, that's not our problem. That's not, that's the county doing that. Then why don't you just resign? Because if the county's running our town, then at least we know who to ask the question. Because, and as of right now, you don't have no answer when people say, you know, why don't you sell those homes to people from Manassas first? Look for it. That was my simple question. Okay? Now, I want to ask you another question. To all of you. Those five trailers that you guys bring in, you call them.
They're not trailers.
Well, you call them what you want.
They're not trailers.
I say that they're like, home without wheels.
They're not trailers.
Okay? Who are they, who are you going to offer those homes first?
Did you read the newspaper?
Did who?
Did you read the newspaper?
I mean, I don't, I don't read fake news, man.
I don't know the.
I don't read fake news, first of all.
Okay, well, first off, I can't recall exactly all the formula, but first off, a certain number of the homes have to be sold at the fifty to sixty percent percentile. They have an income that's between fifty and sixty percent of the median income for that area. Another section of, another couple of homes need to be from sixty to eighty percent. So, they, it, they have quotas they have to meet based upon that. But the end result is, they are for sale, you have to have a job, you have to have income. That's what the, it takes.
So, who in Manassas fits that criteria right now?
Mayor, I think you need to explain that the city has no control over who these houses are being sold to.
He's blaming me on everything.
But they, this.
Well, you're the mayor, right?
And I can control, I can control city assets. I have a voice on that, one of five.
Wasn't Truman to say one time, the buck stops here?
Truman was the president. He had eminent control over the country.
Well, you're the mayor.
I have eminent control over Manassas.
You are the mayor.
Manassas.
You are the mayor.
You realize the city does not own these properties, right? They don't own these properties. Community Action does. Community Action's building those houses. Community Action's going to sell those houses to whoever wants to buy those houses and qualifies for whatever program parameters they set for.
So, the Community Action, this is what they do, in my opinion. They get Jeanette, New Kensington, and Manassas. Three of the most dilapidated cities in the whole county. They don't move it to Hamfield where there's money. They move it to us, in our neighborhood. We don't know who's coming. You know, and I, I'm all in favor to sell it to people that need housing in Manassas with low income You know, and I, I'm all in favor to sell it to people that needs housing in Manessin with low income, that they turned their house down and put them into places down here, but I don't think that that's what you guys got in mind. I think whether it's you and Kahoot with the county, okay, you guys are into bringing other people in here, not people from town. That's what I see. Second question. Last month, I got a little bit pissed off and upset, you know, and I don't have no apologies for it. But I was asking you guys a question. What are you gonna do with those dilapidated vehicles that they're left in town? It's an eyesore. Whether it's Perenny Boulevard, Knox Avenue, or my home base, Montrever. What do you guys do with it? Tell me.
Chief, what, a- all they have to do is actually let you know where abandoned cars are, correct?
They let us know also, whenever officers are on patrol, they notice abandoned vehicles, they tag them, such as abandoned vehicles. After a time goes past, that's whenever they can start being removed. And half the problem was, with Kurt coming in, he was able to find properties where these vehicles at. So that's not really a problem anymore, it's just getting kids down here with this business, trying to disappear.
Well, let me ask you a question. I'm just gonna throw it at all of you, okay, but I just want the public to know. Not you, not you, the public to know. You guys not doing, you guys doing a disservice in Manessin, okay? Because when I go to Knox Avenue and I see cars, oh, you know, like, pointing the wrong way, they should got tow or take it right there and move them out. But they're there for weeks. Why? Up on Perenny Boulevard, it looks like crap. You got boats on the street. You got garbage all over the damn situation. What the hell we're doing about it? I know we short on cops, and I think I asked before, Manessin needs to hire more city workers and more policemen. That's the only way you're gonna clean up Manessin. Because on my street, on Montrever Drive, on my street, and many other streets in Manessin, unfortunately, there's drugs being down right in front of our faces, and we turn the other way. And don't, and the fake newspaper won't put it in because it's gonna cover your butt. They're not on my bed, they're in your bed. But when I see that, it pisses me off, because it's wrong. I'm all in favor of workers, I'm all in favor of cops, but this deal that they're making on the side, that's a bunch of BS that they give us every day and month, and blame it on the county or the place across the street. What the hell's that got to do? You're the mayor of them. Get the county, your two Republican friends, to blacktop our streets. Get the county to put some money in some of these empty spaces that you got. Get the county to do what they do in the Hamfield and Ross Draver. Give us no bunch of crumb, give us a couple million bucks so we can do something with it. You know, don't kiss their ass and they give you nothing.
Anybody else?
Delmar Haplem, Municipal Fire Chief. Uh, two things. I'll keep it short. Uh, one is the foreign fire tax.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just so that there's no, uh, in, uh, with making these checks out, the titles that are here aren't the official titles. They will be on the check, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 'cause like, Manessin Ho's house number one, that is actually the Relief and Fire, or Fire Department and Relief Association.
Right.
It has to say relief, that's where the money comes, goes to.
That was just for the agenda.
The other thing is, again, I wanna thank, uh, Mike and the mayor for staying on top of this LSA thing, and we have some future plans for the state LSA also.
Yes.
So, uh, that, that's a big deal to me, I really appreciate that. The other thing is, just real quick, and I don't know what the intentions are of the homes on, on Motherall, but I will tell you that, how I came to be, and how I came to be here in the city of Manessin. When I started working in the city of Manessin at Grandview Cemetery, I didn't have a pot to pee in, okay? I had a newborn son, there was six months years, uh, six months old, and, uh, we came to Manessin looking for somewhere to start a family. And how I came to be is through the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. And without the help of that program, I wouldn't had a home and I wouldn't be here. So it's not that, uh, you know, you, you wanna bring people here, you want them to start families like I did. And I've been here for thirty years, and I think I've been an asset to the community, and we can surely use some more assets.
Absolutely, thank you, thanks. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
May I like to make the motion to adjourn at eight twenty-three?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, then it means adjourned.